I call a regular meeting of the Culpeper Planning Commission to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Siriyo?
Here.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Clemens?
Here.
Mr. Clannick is absent?
Will we approve the agendas presented?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, let's sign it. All right, we have an agenda. Approval of the minutes from the April twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five work session?
Will we approve the minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then opposed, we have minutes. Okay. Comments and correspondence from citizens, visitors, and delegations in the audience. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any matter not scheduled for a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak tonight? Seeing no one, we will move on to unfinished business. The town's at Mountain Brook Estates subdivision staff will present a site plan approval extension request per Town Code Section twenty-seven dash two sixty-nine to allow the applicant to continue to work with staff to resolve a sewer alignment concern.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We presented this at the work session last month. Planning Commission had asked for a little bit of additional information from the applicant, which has been provided in the memo that's part of the packet here. At this time, it's really just if there's any additional information that the commission would want. There are representatives of the applicant here. If you have questions for them or staff is available to answer them, otherwise, that we would ask for the commission to consider making a decision on this this evening.
Do any of the members have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
Yeah, we're extending. What are we extending?
This would extend the site plan validity of the approved twenty-sixteen plan for one year. Currently, the applicant does have a revision in that we're working on with them to revise the sewer alignment, and so this would allow them to continue to work on that revision for the sewer alignment.
Currently zoned R one?
It's currently in zone industrial.
Industrial, okay.
Correct. This is a very odd legacy project that's non-conforming in terms of its approval from the early two thousands that was carried over initially because of the housing crisis, and then with an amendment that they did during that time due to the COVID crisis.
And what is it to revert to if we don't approve?
So the underlying zoning remains industrial. This does not change it. It was a buy-ride industrial development at that time, so the underlying zoning will be industrial under any circumstances here.
Okay, okay.
Questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant?
On behalf of the applicant.
Yes, absolutely, sure. Just identify yourself.
John Bennett, an attorney. I've practiced here my whole career, few years. And Steve Swan is here, who's the manager of Swan Family Properties on behalf of his children, grandchildren. And Marvin Henshaw is here, who's been the engineer on this project all the way through. I can say this, that nothing would make Swan Family Properties happier than to have this approved and sold many years ago. But that just didn't happen. It was sort of a moving target. Things were changing as we went along. And the most important thing, as I mentioned here, we did not receive a concrete offer on the property until we had this sewer question, and he would not take the property until this sewer question is resolved. So once this is resolved, we really have the property sold.
What is the problem with the sewer?
On a plot that was recorded for the adjoining subdivision, there was a note that was just tucked in there that a little portion of the sewer right away was abandoned. And so without that portion, it was not continuous. Oh, sorry, excuse me, was not continuous. So it did away with the easement. The Swans didn't know anything about that until the fellow that abandoned it called them up and wanted to buy it for cheap. And I said that they weren't interested. And he said, well, maybe they should be because they don't have sewer anymore. So that's how we found out. But I want to thank staff. This is a difficult situation, figuring this thing out, the sewer. I think we finally got it figured out.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any questions for Mr. Bennett?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna exercise my rights under Roberts rules for small groups. We discussed at the work session that we believe that this motion should be made and have findings accompany it. So I actually put together some findings. So I will go ahead and make the motion on this case. I move to grant the one-year extension based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the applicant has a currently approved site plan. Number two, the applicant is actively working to remediate the issues preventing the project from starting on time. More specifically, they're working on an amendment to move the sewer line shown on the approved plan after they were unable to obtain an easement for that line from the neighboring property owner. Three, the application for an extension is allowed by code and was made within the required timeframe. And four, the planning commission understands that the applicant is allowed only one twelve-month extension.
Second?
Second.
Yes. Any discussion?
I'll just make the observation, as you said a moment ago, that we had some extensive discussion of this at the last town, at a working meeting. So it's not coming to us for the first time. It's not fresh from here. We worked it through pretty carefully.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No? Okay, all right, pass it. All right, moving on. New business capital improvements program. Staff will present to the commission their FY twenty-six to FY thirty capital improvements program for proposed upcoming town Culpeper capital facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for not getting this to the planning commission at the work session earlier. We were a little focused on the code update, and so this had fallen through the cracks. But we don't really have a whole lot new to discuss with the commission. As noted, this is a requirement of state code that the planning commission prepare the capital improvement program. So we're running through quickly the projects proposed. The one new project that is proposed is related to a new police building within the town. The extent that's included in the capital improvement program currently, though, is simply a study that has already been funded in the upcoming year's budget to essentially identify the space needs and the optimal path forward for a new police building. And so this is identified for seventy-two thousand dollars within the upcoming fiscal year.
For how much?
Seventy-two thousand dollars for the study.
Oh, for the study.
Again, we don't know yet the scope of what that's gonna reveal. And so for the time being, that's the extent of what's included in the program.
Is there a site proceed?
Well, that's part of what's gonna be contemplated, because the town has purchased the property across the street from the police station. And so it's going to be looking at various configurations to determine what's the optimal solution for town police moving forward.
And the need, I guess, the need has been established.
Yes, they are. They are essentially bursting at the seams within that existing building.
That's what we heard about five years ago when they went to this building that they're in now. I mean, build it big enough so we don't have to do it.
Well, that's ideal. The plan is to be able to identify essentially what we need, what we're going to need moving forward. Again, as we've seen, we're certainly in a period of growth within the town, but we don't really see signs of abating in the immediate future. So this hopefully will allow us to do it right for the next number of years. So if there's no additional questions on that one, I'll move on. Then we have the Madison Road Connector Trail. One of the things you'll notice, this has been on the plan previously. However, in the current fiscal climate, we've pushed it out a couple of years in terms of the actual completion of this, as far as when we anticipate being able to have funding. We had been lined up for fairly significant federal funding that did not end up coming through because of budget delays on their end. And so we'll continue to explore options for, to augment local funds to be able to construct this. There are some proppers that are associated with the two data center projects that are anticipated to be used towards this as well. But this is something that we'll be looking to do in the future. It is proposed in two phases. Essentially, the first is that loop, and the second will be then the connection down to Madison Road. But we don't want to create that connection until we have a safe way to accommodate crossing Madison Road as well, which will likely be a separate project.
Can you just point out, I'm not being, I'm, I can't orient myself in this photograph. Can you point to a landmark or something?
This is Rockwater Park right here.
All right.
So this is sort of the creek behind Oak Lawn.
All right, and that's the reservoir up there, and that's the other reservoir down there.
Correct, and this is the golf course.
Yeah, okay, got it, thank you.
The first phase would be that, the connection.
And part of that, isn't part of that trail already, no? Is the, is the north side of that already in place?
It's not currently in place.
That goes up to the reservoir, not the part that goes around it, but the part that goes up to it?
This part is, the green is currently in place.
Isn't this the north side?
This is, this is to the north here.
All right, and then, all right.
So.
That like there, that you just ran down, isn't that already in place, more or less?
No, it is not. This is the Oak Lawn subdivision right here.
Uh huh, right.
So as I said, the stream runs along the back side of it here.
So what I'm thinking of is further up to the north.
There's some of the existing golf, golf cart path that's up here.
There's a trail that runs up from Yount Meadow Park, that's further, that's off speed.
Yeah, correct. But you can see the green there as part of the nature trail at Yount Meadow Park and tie into Spring Street.
All right, very good, thanks. Okay, I see, yeah.
Are we planning to get across Madison Road?
That's still up for discussion.
Take a look at the tower we have going over the railroad tracks. That looks.
Unfortunately, I've seen the price tag that went along with the.
You gotta keep one of the towers, the other one you're already at that level.
True, but you gotta go a little bit further to span that to be able to get there.
I'll tell you what, I'd rather walk across those railroad tracks than Madison Avenue. It's next to that, it's dangerous.
Fair enough.
Yeah, well, and that's why we'll be exploring all options, and we want to make sure there's that safe way, because the last thing they want to do is make the connection trail down to the road, but not provide a safe way for folks to get across, because there's also no sidewalk accommodations on that side of the street.
You know, if we put one of those lights like they have down in Charlottesville where the students can cross whenever they want to, it might solve our downtown traffic problem. People will start finding ways around on Madison Road if they have to stop every five seconds or so.
All right, next one, proposed footsall courts at Yount Meadow Park. Again, these have been pushed out a couple of years in terms of their timing.
What are footsall?
Futsal are essentially a smaller soccer game, sort of within a enclosed area there. It's almost can be considered an indoor soccer type scenario. In these cases, they're outdoors.
It's all grass there?
It's usually done as either fake grass, or it can be hard surface as well. And hard surface often will allow for them to become multipurpose courts, which is, I think, what we're more exploring at this stage, is transitioning them to multipurpose courts.
You know, I did have one comment on this on page ten, I think, of the handouts. It's identified as Yount Meadow Park multipurpose courts. And I'm just trying to figure out why that language isn't consistent.
Because I pulled slides from last year where they were identified as footsall.
But I, let's see, but if you go back to page seven, it's still footsall.
I'll look to update that there. I appreciate you catching that.
Yeah. But it, I mean, everything that is spelled out in the multipurpose court, including footsall, pickleball, small sided basketball, I mean, I walk in Yount Meadow every day. The park has probably never been more popular than it is now, so.
Well, and then also, just in terms of funding opportunities, having the multipurpose nature of these increases our options for grant funding as well.
Is there a diagram that shows how it would fit into Yount Meadow? A concept drawing, or something that would just give us an early idea of how it fit, you know, where it would be set? Because it facilitates some things, but it will exclude others. The land that it's on can't be used for anything else, and it seems like there's a kind of a balancing thing.
It's, yeah, they're, and I apologize, they don't have it here currently. They're proposed essentially adjacent to the existing basketball courts.
Yeah, but it's still would be able to see for scale how much land is being dedicated to this and precluded from other kinds of use. You know what I mean?
Is it possible to get an overview at maybe one of our work sessions?
Sure.
Where it is compared to everything else?
Now, the other option that I'm just wondering is by not actually tagging, do we give ourselves the option to put it some, I mean, if we figured out a later date, there was a better spot for it?
We certainly have some flexibility. Again, it's tricky with Yount Meadow Park because of the floodplain. And so we have done some preliminary work in terms of floodplain studies and on that to identify it. And so that's what I'd be able to share. Again, we did talk about this briefly last year as well, when we were considering it for the CIP. But I can certainly.
The whole park is in the floodplain.
Right, exactly.
It's amazing how great it is, though, now, after all that work they did.
It works well. Just maybe a week out of the year, you can't go there.
Yeah, yeah.
But given the fact that there are many community users of the parkland for different purposes, I think having that illustrated transparency in an easy-to-see way, not just for us, but, you know, for the community at large, would be a very fair thing to do. Get some feedback. I mean, somebody's probably gonna be irked that the land's unavailable, but to see it in context would be important. It strikes me. What is it? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Part of the concept, too, was having it where everybody could walk to it. And of course, everybody walks there already. So that was kind of central for everyone.
Yeah. And what's with, why are the costs divided the way they are? Is there a study for that in twenty-twenty-seven and construction in twenty-twenty-eight?
It was essentially, it's the planning and design and that preliminary site work construction in twenty-seven, and then the actual installation is twenty-eight. Again, these are fluid dates, depending on when funding might be available.
And it looks like available public funding will be substantially absorbed by the connector trail on the police building.
Well, again, as you see, most of these ones, the police building, we haven't identified, because all we have is the study at this stage, but even the connector trail.
What's budgeted here, the cost, what's available out of the general fund, right? What's not?
The general fund has no funds currently for the Madison Road Connector Trail.
Can't be used for that purpose?
It could be, but at the moment, we're still looking to try and offset that as much as possible with outside funding.
So we haven't tried yet for federal, state funding? None of these are like, are these likely to be eligible or not likely to be eligible?
They are likely to be eligible for some portion of grant funding to offset local contributions.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, four-fifths of the funding is to be determined here.
Correct.
Virtually, so it's, that's a lot. That's a big proportion.
It is.
Well, I mean, I think it's important to note that one of the main functions of the CIP in general is because an item is in the CIP, it probably makes it eligible for some grant funding that it wouldn't otherwise be eligible for, and also makes it eligible for proppers.
Oh, I see. Very good. Nice finesse. When we approve this, some part of it becomes automatically then part of the town's budget for the next year. Is that right?
No.
After the council passes?
Well, council's already passed the budget for the next year, and so you definitely want to have a sync up between the two, which is usually why we actually follow the CIP with the, from the budget. So the, but we, the town, different localities do it different ways, but in the town, essentially, we pass the budget first and then follow with the CIP. So the one item that you see identified with the general fund funding for FY twenty-six is the police building study, which is included in here.
I thought, I recalled from our discussion last year about this, when we got into the maintenance, the presence or absence of a maintenance budget for the pool, or a life cycle budget for the pool, that it does, once it's approved, once this plan is approved, that it, either one or two years, the first year or the first two years of it are approved as part of the budget. But you're telling me not so.
Equipment doesn't ever become part of the budget. It's a separate entity.
All right.
Well, anything approved in FY twenty-six would be.
Okay.
Say again?
Yeah, anything, it's that first year, FY twenty-six, would be.
Unless you're buying equipment or something.
I mean, now, not by our.
So it's just twenty-six, though?
Yeah, it would just be the first year.
And that's a product of the way that we set this up, to line it up, to follow the budget in that regard.
That's, that's what I wanted to know. It's limited to twenty-six, and that funding is already in place, so we don't have to even think about whether that's an issue or not.
And it's interesting, because this is both a catch-up.
It's still a work in progress.
Yeah, it's both a catch-up and a look ahead document.
Yeah, okay, good. Thanks. It wasn't my imagination.
Next up, we've got Lakeview Park. Again, in the current fiscal climate, we're not anticipating having funds able to construct this in the foreseeable future. So we've pushed it really to our out-years identified here, which is the twenty-thirty timeframe. But again, we're gonna be looking to find ways to support this as much as possible with outside funding. The Parks and Rec Commission had been lining up to prepare to do some initial groundwork on the proposed design of this. We're essentially gonna be shifting them to focus in the upcoming year on the Parks and Rec component of the comprehensive plan to lend us some input on that particular document.
To go through, you say that this will allow you to go to the Lakeview Connector Trail, also the Redwood Place Connector Trail. It comes in where the boat talking is. So you tie a bunch of trails together, which all go into, where is it? The park. So, yeah, it looks like a good idea.
Good plan, yeah.
You can add that. Reference to that as well.
Oh, yeah.
And then finally, this has been on for a number of years, and we continue to have just as an out-year one. Currently, we're able to share with the county in terms of this facility, but if at any point in the future we needed to have our own, it's desired to keep this on, on the plan. So again, we have it in the out-years identified.
We're sharing it with the county. We're using it exclusively. I mean, it's owned by the county.
I believe they're using it as well for their facilities, at least, not the roads.
A different building, not.
The same location.
Yeah, and I think they, the town and county agreed that to allow them to use it, they'll plow the whole, the whole property there, which includes a parking lot for human services that's up in there.
Mutual benefit.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Works out well, seems like it.
The description here makes it sound pretty dire, but it's still good enough to hold it up, hold out for another four years.
Well, that's.
The project description, you know, this deterioration has caused the wall to fracture horizontally, allowing the internal weight of chemicals to push the walls outwards. The integrity of the blocks have been compromised, so.
And I think what you're reading is what the town currently has, which they're not using anymore.
Correct.
Then they went to, started using the one that the county had. Actually, that was a state facility built. And they're using that now with the county's agreement.
So if the need became imminent for the town to have its own structure, then this would all become active.
Oh, what you're concerned is.
This would be the project description replacement on that basis.
What happens if the county says, we don't want to lease it to you anymore?
That's what I mean, yeah, right, yeah, okay. Very good.
I think their plan looks good.
Yeah. So I just had one comment on the plan in general. In the past, the town was very proactive when it came specifically to, say, water. I mean, you know, these things as we look at issues of growth, police station's a perfect example. And I just wonder if there, if the CIP isn't the right place for some discussion of future utility needs. So whether that means that we, you know, maybe we have a bunch of buried lines that will eventually have to be replaced, or, you know, whatever those, that we just, I just, I'm just wondering if there aren't some utility issues that we need to, that should be incorporated into the CIP.
Would that be the comprehensive plan, that we do that in?
Well, I mean, if any of these things would be, say, like in a five-year budget cycle. So, I mean, I'm trying to think, maybe, I'm just thinking, things that may happen as, you know, as a, as a, let's say, as a byproduct of growth. Let's say you had to install some more crosswalks. You know, it's just, you know, something that would be physical equipment that may just be necessitated. To say, like, you decide that the traffic circle by the Wendy's is dangerous and now needs the lights like Charlottesville, those kind of things would be the kind of thing that could be in the CIP. These are, these are the think-ahead things.
And I think we did that, like, for one of the sidewalks going to the north end of town. I think that was in our comprehensive plan at the time.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking, I mean, in terms of, you know, this document, you know, sort of the best use of this document, one of its definitely, we're already doing of the police station, we recognize that because of growth, there will be a higher demand for services. And I just think that it's a good opportunity to think if there are any other utility type.
I'll have the conversation with, with Mr. Hoy to discuss it. I know we've just recently completed, using ARPA funds, sort of upgrades to the plant, new digester improvements and things like that to give a sustained line. And again, you know, recognizing that these are capital improvements to expand the capacity, it's not the maintenance, not the ongoing operational costs, things like that, but.
You don't want to be two-hundred-and-thirty pages anymore.
I know, I know, I know. Well, the one that actually jumped out to me the most was, even though it wouldn't be part of this, but at some point, we'll have to, we'll start looking at like the V dot six-year plan, and Broad Street improvements will be on it.
The only thing I've noticed, which we don't have in here, are any of the smart scale projects. And that's because there's no expenditure from the town related to those. So there's no capital expense. There's no, it's essentially one that's fully funded by the state. So it's not to say we're not looking at those transportation improvements, simply the scope and scale of those ones with no, no local contribution is not included here. But we did, as Mr. Siriyo alluded to, when we had the TAP projects where there was the local match, those were included in this, in the CIP. The problem has just become, what we found recently with V dot, is that it's difficult for us to be able to work within their system to effectively and efficiently make these improvements where this required the local match. And the example I'll give is the Blue Ridge Avenue sidewalk, where the town was able to do it for less than the twenty percent match of working with V dot. So it's, it's one where I don't anticipate in the near future us partnering with them on the cost-share programs, we'll continue to utilize the fully funded grant opportunities there.
I mean, I think it may be worth an hour of our time and maybe like Mr. Hoy and Mr. Stover's time to do, to add an item to a work session at some point, where we just sort of ask them, what exactly are their anticipated?
Well, one that I do anticipate being on here, because it didn't, was not successful in the most recent smart scale round, was the shared use path along Madison on the north side of town there, from the, from the traffic circle at Main Street all the way down to the Lowe's, essentially. We proposed a shared use path along there. The biggest impediment to that was the cost associated with it. I think that there are improvements that the town can do within that, the scope and scale of what was proposed, much more cost-efficiently than V dot had proposed. And so potentially, we could look to do those ourselves and come back with the other portion of it, and have a very high score in the project that could have those remaining portions funded through the smart scale process. And so that, those town improvements would be included within the CIP.
Also, your group does a very good job about, about seeing what money is available through the state. Okay, that's a project we're gonna have now. And it's a good thing to do. Let the state set the priorities.
Again, as we're able to leverage limited resources, we see it as a.
Save money.
Right. Way to go for the town taxpayers.
Anybody have any more comments on the CIP presented tonight?
Do we have an action? Do we need to take an action tonight?
I would add that the planning commission has a comfort level to do it. Again, I'm happy to still come back and talk about the specific location, potential location of the footsall courts at Yount Meadow Park. Again, that would come back to the planning commission, well, depending on what happens, may or may not come back to the planning commission for review, but we could certainly bring it back in any event to look at at such time that we're actually looking at design for those. But I bring it back, I'll discuss it at the work session next week as well, but.
Siriyo, you're looking for us to adopt this.
If there's a comfort level with what's proposed, with the two amendments that were identified there of the consistency of the multipurpose courts, as well as the inclusion of the Redwood Trail connection as well.
It'll come to the footsall courts. No work will initiate, it will be started on them before this plan comes back, before the commission. Again, it's one more time, right?
That's right.
Yeah, there's no anticipated, not unless there's some tremendous funding opportunity that we're able to find.
I'd like to make a motion that we concur with the capital improvement plan that's presented tonight.
So a motion to adopt?
Right, second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that passes unanimously?
I just want to emphasize, I think, transparency on the footprint of these courts in overall should be attended to.
All right, moving on. There's no other business. Follow-up items, Town Ordinance Amendment Case O dash two oh two five dash zero zero two. Work session, staff will discuss the commission, with the commission, the public feedback. O dash two oh two five dash zero zero two. Work session staff will discuss the commission, with the commission, the public feedback received to date.
So what I wanted to discuss here was, uh, the, uh, Town Council held their first public hearing on this item, uh, last Tuesday. There were a number of speakers there. A number were very, very complimentary of the planning commission's work to date and their responsiveness to the, um, the inquiries and the requests for, for changes that had come in. But again, in a similar fashion that we've done with other public hearings, I wanted to go through speaker by speaker and talk about what was, what was raised, and as well as the, um, the response to it, or, or, or what we have to discuss related to it. So, um, first speaker was, uh, Mr. Larry Geisting, who expressed concern about the proposed NX zoning along Sperryville Pike near Gardner Street. Planning commission had already made the change on the other side of Sperryville Pike in that area between Colonel Jameson and Sperryville, from the proposed NX that had largely been that area to what is now the mix of the RT and the RX after a number of the property owner requests. But there's also, also those portions along Sperryville on essentially that southwest side that are proposed as NX. Those had come about directly, as a direct recommendation of the advisory committee, and so that's why they, they are proposed what they are in that instance.
And what was the apprehension, Mr. Geisting?
Just the intensity of the development.
And that current zoning is R1?
Uh, this is R2.
R2.
R2, sort of particularly right here. And then this one, right at the, uh, at the, at the circle, around about there.
And what is the red?
The, the red is commercial. Um, and it aligns with the existing C3 zoning on those particular parcels.
Right, which is also right, yes, okay. The pink on the, on the before slide?
Uh, that's the C2 zoning, which aligns with the NX.
Which is?
RX. The residential mixed.
A little sliver of RT retained in there. Why not go all RX over there? I mean.
Well, that's where.
Funny little island there.
That area, you're meaning?
Yeah.
Right here?
Yeah.
I, if you recall, we had done the whole thing as RT, and then we've received a number of property owner requests
Okay.
to, to create the RX that we have there, but the, the closer like-for-like was the RT, and so we've.
Is it RX or NX?
Well, those both, the orange is the RX, the light blue is the NX. So I'm not sure if there's any desire from the planning commission to, to take any action at this stage, or to leave it as it is.
We heard, we heard from Mr. Geisting here at public hearing as well, um, in regards to his property, which is on the other side of Sperryville Pike.
Now, his property is on, is.
Gardner Street, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
His property is right there, I believe.
No, he's, I thought he was on the other side.
No?
Nope.
It's that.
Ah, I see.
Is he right at Sperryville Pike and Garner, is he?
He's not on LaClara, I believe. He's the first house down from there.
I'm unsure which was his.
So I believe, actually, this, this may be the easier one, I believe. His is, is, um, this one right here.
So the south side, uh, NX designation zoning that he's apprehensive about, that it's adjacent to his property.
Correct.
All right, to go from
R2.
R2 to NX.
To NX.
Is it, yeah.
We may have to look at that and come back to it.
Yeah, I didn't bring my binder today. It's hard, I don't have the use tables to compare.
Right.
Well, it then leans into the next set of comments, which was Mrs. Geasing, um, who expressed her concern. Not only about that, the NX that's proposed there, but the broader transition from R2 to RX, um, for this larger area
Right.
right in here, as you can see.
Is, yeah, specific, I mean, is, are there specific uses that she's apprehensive about having allowed, you know, uh, that were previously unallowed that are now allowed, uh, under the designation, or, or is it just, don't change it?
I think it was more a, don't change it. Um, in looking at this, I think this is one where it was previously identified for the RX when we had the smaller lot sizes, because a lot of these are, are older lots that are smaller than our current standards would allow. And so I think it was seen as being more consistent with those lot sizes than necessarily focusing on the uses specifically in what was permitted, not permitted, uh, with the proposal for the RX in that area.
And the RX allows it to be, uh, developed to, uh, higher density?
Essentially, the RX would allow all the different residential types, within including multifamily. The big difference with the, the RT and the RS is that they're, they're, they're limited and don't allow the multifamily.
One of these properties in the dark orange now, isn't, isn't this the new apartment?
Parkside is.
Yeah, right by the park.
Parkside is, uh, this property right here.
Right. That project was approved under current zoning.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, because the R2 does allow the multifamily. And we do have a number of, of existing, uh, townhouse and, um, sort of smaller apartment ones in this area as well, that, that the RX would be the appropriate zoning. And you can see, actually, up here, where we've got the, the RX proposed, that's to, to align with the, the current use on the property.
I mean, that street is interesting, because it does, as you come in from Sperryville, you are looking at single-family homes that just sort of turns into much higher-density multifamily.
It's, you know, it, it truly is a mixed neighborhood right now in terms of housing types in there, and, and so, I think from staff's perspective, is the, the, the RX may be the most appropriate one to accommodate all of those. Otherwise, you're looking really at a very chopped up, um, zoning, series of zoning designations there.
The, as with the Parkside, some of the development there is pretty recent. So the likelihood of a redevelopment and an abrupt change in the neighborhood is remote, is fairly remote.
Correct. I mean, what may also be tricky is, again, with much smaller lots, it, you'd likely would need to see, uh, 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 accumulation and a compilation of multiple lots to be able to do any sort of real multifamily development.
Right, and it would be, have to be commercially viable to tear down the existing structures and redevelop them in order, again, for substantial change in the neighborhood character.
Correct.
And, well, yes.
What's the address of the orange that you were just talking about, the small orange just below the light blue?
Uh, Parkside one.
Is that Parkside?
Parkside is right here.
No, no.
The, the other one.
I'm sorry, up here?
No.
To the left.
Oh. I don't know off the top of my head, I'm afraid.
Okay. But is that, it's not Sperryville, it's, what's that street?
No, it's, 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 give me a second, I'll tell you.
Sorry. Not on here.
Thank you, Kelly. Fairview Village, Fairview Village Court.
We're making great television tonight.
I forgot about that. I like to forget about that. I can, I'll find it. Don't, don't, let me hold you up, I can.
You know, if you type in eight hundred Fairview Village Court, if you want an address to take you.
Okay.
Right there.
I think, based on these two that we've talked about, this review is great, but I have a feeling that, um, we're all gonna say that we want to take action on any of these later.
But, which is fine.
Yeah.
Uh, again, she also reiterated the opposition to the proposed NX, um, for those parcels, four oh one to five nineteen Sperryville, which are those, those ones adjacent there. And, and expressed her, her opinion that the data centers should be prohibited within the town, um, entirely.
Okay. That's not gonna happen. Maybe I should know this by now, but with the, uh, the tran, the, uh, difference between RX and RT is, is substantially around density, not, there, there aren't by right, there aren't significant by right uses there are, there are. Okay, could you summarize them quickly, or?
So, as I said, RX essentially, it will allow all of the different residential types, multifamily.
But uses, not just, uh, density. I mean, like, I can, I'm sorry to interrupt, but did, uh, is there greater scope for commercial use, or home businesses, or?
No, neither permit commercial outside of home occupations or, or, or those ones. They're, they're, again, we're, we're moving to largely, uh, more definitive zoning categories, where the residential, the residential, the commercial, the commercial, and we do have some mixed ones, but those are identified that way.
But, so that kind of, uh, broad discretion of use comes in with the NX classification?
The NX is one of the mixed ones, the neighborhood mixed use, and that does allow that mix of commercial and residential.
That's where that flexibility comes in.
Correct.
Thanks.
It's the red zoning.
The red is commercial. So in the existing red, that's, that's our C3 that we have there, and in the proposed, it's, it's that, that commercial, that's the equivalent of the C3 and C4 that we currently have.
At NX, just above the C, isn't there, uh, a strip mall there?
Mm-hmm.
Why wouldn't it be red?
Again, we took it as more like-for-like with the, the existing C2 zoning for that. Um, the red, the commercial allows more of the vehicle-oriented commercials, so things like, uh, fast food, drive-throughs, and gas stations, vehicle sales.
Well, right across the street, you have in red, or, uh, at, um,
Gas station.
Places.
Gas station.
Right.
And then the gas station right next door is in red, too.
Again, as I said, we, we, we went with the like-for-like.
Okay, gotcha.
Um, and so that's, that, that's what we have there. Again, it's at the discretion of the planning commission wants to do, to, to make a change, but that, that's, that's how we reached that one. So, uh, moving on to the next one, uh, Ms. Clarissa Hicks expressed concern about limited industrial. Currently zoned limited industrial M1, um, being proposed as industrial, specifically where it's in close proximity to residential development. Um, unfortunately, she didn't identify any specific locations, so it, it's hard for us to address what's there. Um, we are removing some industrial zoning in some places, replacing it with commercial or NX, depending on what's, what's, um, currently on the sites or developed there to, to, to limit this in some ways. But again, it's difficult for, for staff to be able to address this without knowing what specific, uh, location she's, she's got concern about.
So you weren't allowed to ask questions. They just, this was, uh, residents standing up and speaking, and without the opportunity for clarification?
Correct. Uh, Mr. Kaiser spoke, expressing his desire for all the homes along Southeast Street to be proposed with the RS. Um, we've got a slide later on that I think will lend itself more to that discussion, so if you don't mind, we'll, we'll postpone that one. Uh, Mr. Olwiler was compl- complimentary of staff in the planning commission during this process. Uh, Mr. D'Arnett spoke, again, expressed appreciation for the changes, the, the proposed zoning for his family's properties, but he did still have some concerns related to outstanding, uh, problem, problem zoning parcels, as he identified them. So essentially those where, where the zoning is offered, the proposed zoning is offered doesn't match the desired zoning of, of the property's owner. He noted that there have only been negative speakers who have been opposed to the form-based portion of the zoning. Um, and then he stated that he believed that the zoning, that the zoning date, or the effective date of the zoning should be synced with the assessment cycle to ensure that there's no, um, issues with property assessments. Um, so again, we have not had a conversation with the county assessor's office about that. We can reach out to them to find out more information.
That's a county problem.
You can understand why he's bringing it up, though.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know.
He was always involved in that.
Yeah, of course.
Did he, uh, identify specific outstanding problem zoning parcels, or just a general?
Just a general statement.
Some things don't fit in.
Well, noting that, you know, staff in the planning commission have been working to remedy these where we've, uh, where we've been notified of them, but.
Where they've been identified.
Correct.
In specific terms, yeah.
Correct, but his belief that there may still be a thirty-some or some outstanding ones.
I'm sure there, yeah.
Well, he mentioned that his family has three properties. He didn't mention any of those three in particular with.
Well, those, those are the ones we fixed, or we, we updated.
Right.
So he was okay with those?
Correct.
Okay.
And he's a resident of the county. He's not a resident of the town.
Well, except a pale property within the town.
Right, I just mean, it's, 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 we live in two different places. We live in the town, which is part of the county, but they are completely different places. I mean, the town is putting twenty thousand people in a very small portion of a county that is, you know, just pushing sixty. So we are dealing with density issues that someone who lives in the county probably doesn't have to spend a lot of time thinking about.
Mm-hmm. And we're right.
Yeah, yeah.
What's our population now, by the way?
A little over twenty thousand. So we, we, we doubled in size from two thousand to twenty twenty.
It was ten thousand in two thousand twenty twenty?
In, in, in two thousand, the census figured.
Two thousand, yeah, yeah, no, that's right, yeah. Right.
Uh, Mr. Dwyer spoke and expressed his concern about the building type regulations, the possible cost implications. Uh, Mr. Brady spoke, expressing a sentiment that anything is an improvement over the existing. Uh, so we do have some requested changes to the proposed zoning map. This one is related to the parking lot across the street from the Verizon Building, um, at that corner up Old Brandy Road. Um, currently, it's zoned R2. The request is for RX, as there is contemplation of multifamily development on that, that particular property, redeveloping the parking lot.
What was that, location?
Yeah.
So this is the, a, a parking lot across, sort of across the street from the, uh, Verizon Building at the intersection of Piedmont and Old Brandy.
Gotcha.
If, um, if the owner wanted to make that change, if there weren't, if a ordinance revision weren't on the table, and the owner wanted to request rezoning for that parcel, there would be, um, would there be a public hearing and a neighbor notification?
There would, um, but the owner also would be able to develop multifamily housing on that property without the need for a rezoning.
Because it's R2.
Because it's R2 now.
Uh, what does he achieve? Uh, what, uh, options become available to him? So it's, he just wants to go to RT?
He wants to essentially retain his ability to, to develop, he wants to go to RX.
RX.
Because the RT does not allow multifamily.
Yeah, this is another one that, again, as I mentioned earlier, that
Split level.
Know that I would just like to see, again, you know, you, you're updating us now, but let's, can we look at this again next week?
We, again, we certainly can't.
Yeah, all of them, honestly. Yeah. I mean, I, I'm sort of treating this presentation now personally as informational, right? And that anything that requires action by us, we would have to do, we would have to look at again. I mean, I, I, I don't know that it's, I, I don't like to use the word fair, but I don't know that it's fair to the plan, to us as planning commissioners, um, to look at this and.
Or just giving us the comments that were made.
Right, right, right.
What's gonna be different, um, at the working meeting? We'll have five.
That we'll have a week to, that, yeah.
Yeah.
Sync in, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of deer and headlights. I mean, right, I mean, so, yeah.
We're about making hasty decisions.
Yeah.
That's just a parking lot right now.
Currently, it's just a parking lot. It, it, it had been done, they, they had had a long-term lease with the Verizon Building, uh, for parking there. The Verizon just recently worked with town to complete a study, has, has changed essentially their, their functional operation over time. They don't have the same parking generation needs.
Right.
And so they had let that lease lapse, um, and so now it's really an underutilized property. The next one is, uh, one ten West Evans Street. This is right at the corner of, um, West and, and Evans. The property is currently zoned C3. They are doing some auto repair work there that would not be allowed under the NX, and so have requested the commercial zoning that would allow them to continue to do that. So while it does look odd, it, it, it is C3, and so alike-for-like.
But we also had, I think. But we also had, I think it was, the person who owned this business also spoke at our public hearing.
That was a different, different individual.
Okay.
It's the cross street there.
Uh, Evans and West.
Oh, it's Evans and West.
Right.
Yeah, it's, again, it's, it's, they've got multiple tenants in there. There's the, the accountants, I think have the most prominent sign, but I believe the other, the other use on it is, is the auto repair.
And the address is one ten West? I missed your one ten West Evans, but that should be on the corner of Main. There's no zero block. Yeah, let's look at that next.
Yeah, again.
I won't be here.
Oh, okay.
Look at it.
I don't think any action's gonna be done then either.
West Evans Street.
So that anomalous looking, um, zoning fragment would be justified by retention, by, uh, intent to retain the existing uses.
Correct.
And nobody else in the, in the, surrounding him in the area that is currently zoned as commercial has the same concern?
Not that they have expressed to us, again, uh, uh, there's a lot of residential in that area that, that would essentially be non-conforming under, certainly under the commercial. They may be still be non-conform if they're single family detached under the NX, but at least it's, it's closer.
NX versus commercial, the NX would give you the ability to have commercial downstairs and residential upstairs.
Correct. The, the NX is the broadest of the zoning categories in terms of its permissiveness. So in that regard, it's, it's most similar to, to a lot of the current zoning that we have in town, which is pretty broad. So again, with us deliberating on these more next week, if, I'll, I'll, I'll look to move on. Um, this is the Southeast Street map. We've, uh, received an updated petition with additional properties having signed on. So you can see it's becoming, um, much more solidly gray or much more solidly that, that RS as opposed to the RT.
That makes me feel more comfortable, get the whole thing one way.
More signatures too, right?
Well, thi- this is reflecting the additional signatures now.
Difference.
It's definitely becoming more solid.
There's seven additional properties that have, um, indicated a preference for RS versus RT.
Then just.
But, uh, all right, but their, their ask is that the whole, uh, even the non-requesting properties, that the whole block be rezoned as RS, is that right?
Correct, and that, that, that's what Mr. Kaiser had requested, that's why I've got the next slide here. This, this shows the extent of the, um, the historic district. Now it includes the cemetery as well as some of the currently industrially zoned land across the railroad tracks that I don't think we would look to include within that request. But you can see this, the extent of it. And also, I know that there would be objection from, um, the property owner right here at the far end. Um, because they have an, uh, a short-term rental of that particular property that they do that would be prohibited in the RS where it's allowed in the NX that's currently proposed.
What's your point in juxtaposing these two maps?
This is, the, the, the one on the left is the extent of the historic, the, the, the East Street Historic District.
Right, and that's East Street running sort of on the left side.
So this is, yes, this is East Street right here. This is E, E Street right here. So the, this is where the historic district starts, right here at the, the, the intersection right there is.
So it's most of it is.
This point right here.
Is embedded within the historic district.
Correct, and so this runs down to here, which is down to.
And what's the implication of that for our decision here?
Again, this was Mr. Kaiser's request that, that everything within the historic district.
Oh, I see.
And the historic district is not, that's not something the town facilitated, right? I mean, how, what?
Correct, it's not, it's not, correct, it's not part of the town's historic district.
Historic district that we see, it's separate.
It's not what historic district is it? Why are there two historic districts?
No, yeah, what I mean is, but it's not a, I mean, historic, that, that identification of a historic district has nothing to do with zoning.
Correct, it's not, it's not part of the town's, um, historic district overlay.
Right.
Um, it's, it's a state level designation in this instance. It's, it, it, it becomes very fun and complicated, so we have the state level, we have the national register historic district within the downtown area. And then we have the town's historic district overlay and none of the boundaries align with each other.
Does he bring forth?
We planned that.
Does he bring forth any material argument, uh, that is associated with, uh, historic district designation? Or is it just, is just a convenient way to block that terrain?
I, I, I think the argument is that the, the, the character of the historic district is such that it lends itself more closely to the RS designation zoning district than it does to the RT.
Because it's historic, okay.
Again, this, um, can be discussed further next week, but wanted to share the, the two here. Um, this is, uh, this is two staff identified ones. Um, this is in the vicinity of Rockwater Park and, and the changes that we had made along, um, uh, Saunders Street. Previously, we, we, we received a concerned inquiry from someone on these two parcels, which are part of Rockwater Park. Um, we had shown them as designated for the residential, the, the RS. Um, someone was concerned that there were plans, but from the town to develop them, there are no plans, they are intended to be parked. And so, uh, to remain parked, so we, we, we corrected that. Um, but we did also realize that, that this parcel on the corner down here, um, which is zoned commercial currently, um, has office use on it was being proposed for the residential use, and so have looked to correct that to the NX to correspond with, um.
Three tenant owners progress.
This is, there was not, we did not receive the owner's request on this one, but this is just a recognition of, of, um, again, one of those problematic, problem zoning ones where we, we had missed, missed the, uh, the appropriate designation there. Uh, and so looking to, to remedy that situation.
The NX, right?
It would be NX, correct. Um, then some updates in terms of, of the textual portion, portion. Um, in the code update, as we discussed, we've added concrete masonry units as a permitted major facade material for the general building type. Um, the bed and breakfast parking standards have been updated to one space per rental bedroom plus two spaces. So that way essentially they will always have at least the three spaces required for single family residents moving forward and have additional off-street parking required for, or, uh, uh, available for, for the guests there. So they shouldn't have impacts on the community in terms of on-street parking. The various home occupations updates that we had discussed, those have been incorporated in there. Um, so the, the inclusion, inclusion of language related to the required permitting for fats, oils and greases, um, health department, um, the limitations on restricting, uh, outside employees at, at the home occupations. Um, the update of the inclusion so that, um, home offices and home occup, uh, uh, and home-based businesses counted towards that, that fifty percent or forty-nine percent, uh, home occupation limitation. Um, so those are all the ones that we had discussed at the work session have been incorporated into, into the update. Uh, we've also added in the posting requirements as we discussed, so essentially putting the sign out in front, um, before public hearings for, uh, the rezonings, for the conditional use permits, for variances going before the board zoning appeals and administrative modifications. So those four would all have to post the properties in advance of, um, a hearing or a, a determination on that.
Can you say them again before?
It's the rezoning, the conditional use permit, the, uh, variance before the BZA.
Right.
Um, so those are essentially the three public hearing ones. And then the, the other one is the administrative modification, which is one where the mailing is sent to the immediate properties, um, around where they've requested it, but this would essentially give a broader audience the, the ability to comment on the, on a proposed administrative modification. So again, the next steps, we've got, um, the regular meeting this evening, uh, open houses coming up on Thursday and Saturday. Um, we've got the town's three P committee next week, uh, open house later that day as well. Uh, our work session next Thursday, two more open houses, the thirtieth, uh, June second and ninth. Uh, and then town council's second public hearing on the tenth. Um, and what we got then is on, on the twenty-fourth, um, I'm gonna be having the conversation with town council um, about what our desired next steps are gonna be. Essentially, I'm gonna be asking them for constructive feedback on if there are items that they believe are non-starters for them within the code. Um, because if there are, I'd like to be able to pull those out before we go to what I, what I'm gonna call final public hearings before the planning commission and town council. Because I think there's a lot of things in here that are very, very beneficial to the town that, um, essentially I think we need to get something through. And if there are items that are going to kill the whole thing, um, I wanna try and take those out before we get to that stage of the whole thing, um, failing.
Now, what necessitates the planning commission having another public hearing?
Essentially, I want the public, uh, the, both the planning commission before their recommendation and town council before their final decision to hear from the public on what I'm gonna call the final draft. Because again, we've had a moving target of, of changes to the draft as we've gone through this process. Essentially, I wanna be able to prepare following all the feedback we've received from the, at that stage, the four public hearings and from the planning commission and council, essentially a final version.
But this would be above and beyond statutory requirements.
Correct, we're already above and beyond statutory requirements because of having the, the four public hearings along the way.
Right, right, right.
We only needed one of each.
Okay.
But again, this, this needs to be reflective of, of the community's desire. And so I think the more opportunities both the planning commission and council have to hear from the community, um, the better off we are in this situation.
I, I agree, I just wanted to spell out the fact that this is above and beyond, this is not standard according, right, by, by code requirements, right?
I like it.
Yeah, yeah.
When do we anticipate that happening, July or August?
So I would anticipate August of planning question, public hearing and September council. Cause that gives us July, again, not knowing the scope of what the changes may be. And we also need to send out new postcards, um, to everybody, alerting them to the public hearing. Um, so my, my tentative timeline would be, as I said, August before planning commission, September before town council.
And, and, okay. I, I would, I would only note that we should look at the school calendar for August to just figure out where. I mean, if, if we're, if school has started, then August is okay, right? Otherwise, I mean, if we're going to all the trouble to have a public hearing, I would wanna make sure that the public was in town.
We'll take a look, but I think with, with everything having shifted seemingly earlier, I imagine by the third Tuesday of August that school likely will be back in session, but we'll confirm.
Okay.
Good point.
So that, that's it. As I said, we'll, we'll look to bring most of these, all of these items that are discussion ones back to the planning commission next Thursday um, for further deliberation. Uh, we'll see, we may well have some additional items at that time as well.
Um, is there any, I, I think, um, our regular, our chair had asked in an earlier time that we have access to town council's input on some of the details here. That didn't, uh, happen for some reason, did?
This is what we're, so these comments that were being presented today were the ones that came from the town council public hearing.
Not town council, who, the council, the, the lawyer. Is that, is that, that didn't, he wasn't, he couldn't make it.
He wasn't able to make it, we're anticipating the, the, the June meeting.
Just in the absence of the regular chair, I just mentioned it to see, you know, just due diligence, is that foreseen? Will, 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 like, will that occur during the working meeting next week? Or is it just determined to be overtaken by events?
No, June is when, uh, I, I, I'm trying to remember if it's the, I think it's the, um, the work session in June that we're anticipating having council here. Um, I believe Martin is unavailable. I believe it's going to be, um, his colleague Tracy Galer, who most recently before joining San Zanderson was the county attorney for Falkir County.
Okay, um, so moving on, uh, any other planning director updates?
Uh, no updates at this time, sure.
All right, commission member discussion, any discussion?
I don't have anything.
Yeah, okay, all right, with that.